We're ready.
You're on the record.
Right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, a couple of days before Thanksgiving, November 24th, 2020. The time is 9:00 a.m. and the Board of eighty county commissioners, we are in session for our open business meeting this morning. We have all three commissioners with us. Commissioner Lachlando and Malloy are on WebEx. And then also on WebEx, we have Bob McQuaid, Teresa Radamaker, Katie Reed, Beth Mon, Sean Rain, Joe Lombardo. And do we know who the E is? Did I miss someone on Bridge?
Sue Axman, Emergency Management.
There you go. Okay. I couldn't figure it out. It's era X to the T-S-M-U. Complicated. And then in the room, we have our one and only Bob Batista. Welcome, Bob. Wouldn't be the same without you here.
You know, it's a precedent I gotta set up.
You set the bar pretty high. Any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead then. First of all, we have volunteer board appointment, and this is the reappointment of Ed Lodge to the Western Idaho Fair. Term to expire, September 30th, 2022. So Bob, you wanna say a couple of words about Ed? I know I've-
Yes, Ed has been with us for a couple of terms, and this was one of the few that we decided to carry forward to the the next one more term. Ed's also been participating in the Citizens Advisory Committee. He's a representative from there. So I think in the shuffle of things, they just thought also we never really appointed him officially. So this is that opportunity. So and it was a good catch on your part, Commissioner, that because I'm lacking a secretary out there, we kind of missed this vote on making sure it was done. So some of this responsibility lies on me on the reappointment, but we're there now.
Okay, great. So could you, everyone on Bridge mute if you're not speaking? I'm getting a lot of feedback. Make sure you're on mute. Thank you. So yes, Ed Lodge, he's like just a stellar volunteer. He's done a remarkable job, serving also as co-chair, like you said, of the Citizens Advisory Committee. And I think with three, four new board members, that he will, he will lend some continuity, some tradition, some, you know, some of the things that, yeah, that may get lost.
Yep, yep. This is really good women.
I think it is. So with that, you wanna go ahead and make the reappointment motion? Commissioner Lachando?
Sure, Madam Chair. I move to approve the reappointment of Ed Lodge to the Western Idaho Fair Expo Idaho Advisory Board, term to expire September 30th, 2022.
Okay, we have motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Please tell Ed thank you from the board. All right, let's go ahead into new business then. We have three resolutions. I'm gonna open the public hearing first on Resolution 2574, authorizing destruction of human resource records. And I believe, I don't know, I don't think anyone is here to testify on that. I don't see Cassie. Anyone else here to provide testimony on this? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Commissioner Malloy, you wanna go ahead and make the motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2574 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2575. This is to adjust the budget to reflect a receipt of unscheduled revenue to the Coroner's Office. Is anyone here to provide testimony on this? Nope, looking at the resolution, it looks like out of the $250,000 grant that they received from the National Institute of Justice, they have moving forward $38,409 left over. And so that's what will be going, the amount that will be going into the new budget. Any questions on that? Okay, no one to provide testimony, let's go ahead and close that public hearing. And we'll take up a motion, Commissioner Lachando.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution number 2575 as listed on the agenda.
Aye.
We have motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. And the Bow Wow has it. Motion carries. Let's open-
Good levity for me.
Let's open the public hearing on Resolution 2576. This is the auction off the 2007 Ford Focus. And no, Patrick, you cannot bid on it. Is there anyone here?
No, I just-
Go ahead.
I just reached out to Bob McQuaid because I remember discussions, I think, I thought it was around BOE, but it was around the parking difficulties we have with, you know, people needing to use their own cars and go out and do assessments and how all that worked. I just remember a lot of discussion about the the need for vehicles, but if nobody needs it, then we need to auction it off.
Okay. Anyone like to provide testimony? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioner Malloy, you wanna make that motion?
Sure, Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2576 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, new under new, we have a catering permit, and this is for the Cellar's Wine Club. And I believe, is Heather with us? Heather Luther? I think she was gonna be on with us. So this is, Commissioners, if you recall, this is the one where they're not gonna do the tasting now, and they need the permit because it's offsite, and they're going to have people drive through and pick up their wine. And I think that-
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Patrick.
I I reached out, and I actually spoke with the with the woman seeking this permit, and we were both perplexed as to whether they would actually need a catering permit simply to distribute sealed alcohol that had already been sold at their establishment. But the Bureau of Alcohol said, yes, they do in fact need that if they're gonna be offsite.
Okay, you wanna go ahead then and make the motion?
Sure, Madam Chair, I move to approve the catering permit as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, Clerk's Office. Morning, Katie.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Phil and Trent are both out this week, enjoying so much deserved R and R. One of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention was one of the agreements that you have in front of you today.
Okay.
It's an amendment to the agreement with Sierra Cedar for our HRIS and budgeting system. It's my understanding that you've had previous discussions about this, but because it was decided to delay part of this project, which was the planning and budgeting cloud service, and the cost to the amendment was gonna be $200,000, and Trent, in his awesome negotiation skills, was able to get this down to $75,000.
Yeah.
So that is a huge win for the county, a great cost saving. So I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of that and bring it to your attention.
Great, thank you. I'm trying to find it on here. Is that one listed on here? Do you know if the-
Yes, I think it looks on the agenda that it's Agreement Number 13587-2-20, the very last one.
Oh, there we go.
This is the one we had discussion about the need for additional funds last week to get it over the finish line, but that's great news from Trent, so.
Yes.
Does he pull Air Force rank when he does that?
I don't know what what he does, but he does a great job in negotiating.
All right, Commissioners, any questions or discussion on any of the other agreements?
No, I just, I just do wanna point out that it's interesting that everyone in the Clerk's Office sounds like they've been pulling an all-nighter to cram for some exam after elections and everything. Katie, you still don't have your voice back completely, I can tell.
Yes, it's been a long few weeks, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
All right then, let's go ahead. Patrick, you wanna make the motion?
I don't know that we have a motion here.
No, we don't. Let's see, no, we don't.
No, we we will when we get to the agreements. Yeah.
Anything else from the Clerk's Office? All right, thanks, Katie.
No, Madam Chair, that was it. I hope you guys have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
You too, you as well. All right, let's go ahead then. A motion on the Claims Journal, you wanna go ahead and make that one? Commissioner Malloy?
Sure, Madam Chair, I move to authorize payments of claims on the Claims Journal dated November 20th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, Personal Action Forums. Commissioner Lachando?
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the Personal Action Forums as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on the Clerk's Office.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, Assessor's Report. Good morning. Bob, how are you?
Madam Chairman, I'm doing well, and fellow Commissioners, just a couple of things here. The motor vehicle wait times, we're still looking at, we're probably less than an hour now, that's the total wait time. Once they get in the doors, down to about 25 minutes to 30 minutes. Outside is probably the average, I mean, I guess it's maybe 25 minutes. You know, going back seven weeks, we were looking at an hour and a half outside to two hours outside, so we're making some progress. But I just don't see any real significant gains being made now in the future, so a lot of it just must be attributable to the system. There's more information that needs to be entered prior to giving a a motor vehicle license. The, every wait time is 25 minutes inside, transaction time is 11 minutes. Our typical transaction time was, used to be five minutes or less, so I think probably 10 minutes is going to be, just gonna be normal in the in the future. One thing I do need to add, and I don't know if I've mentioned this to you or not, and that is ITD is looking at a sea change in the way motor vehicles are distributed. And so it makes finding difficult. My first reaction would be when we see this 11-minute wait time, that we are just gonna start hiring more people. But with what ITD is talking about doing, that might not be necessary at all. In fact, we'd be looking at probably a reduction in staff, and that would be probably in less than five years. So that's the motor vehicle side. On a, on a better note, we've got on single-family residential, or we're looking at about a 15% increase. That's from January 1st to October, 15% increase on single-family residential. If you look at year over year, that's 20%. So actually, is this year-to-date, you have 20% year-over-year, 15% year-to-date. So we're looking at some pretty hefty increases on a single-family residential this next year, and we'll just see how that all pans out and how the legislature addresses the property tax issue. So Madam Chairman, Commissioners, that's everything from the Assessor's Office today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but before I do, I've got a 9:30 meeting. I'm gonna have to slip out of this one to make it to that one.
Okay, thank you.
That's everything I have.
Any questions, Commissioner McQuaid?
Question and then a comment. So, you know, it sounds like over time, there's gonna be some efficiencies created at ITD, but I I guess I'm wondering, Bob, in the meantime, unlike driver's license, you have the ability to raise rates, to, you know, to raise fees, to potentially alleviate some of this wait time. And I guess, you know, I'm on my way out here, but I I would, I would say that most Ada County residents would probably gladly pay an additional dollar or two to cut, to cut a half an hour off their wait time. So just something to to think about, and I don't know what the timing would be on that, but, you know, that's always the balance of of cost and and service. And then the second thought, you know, I have said this for a while, that, you know, I think all of us were grateful to get our tax bills this year. Hi, Beth, thank you. I got mine, thank you very much. And, but I, I think we're, we're setting ourselves up for kind of a world of hurt next year with the, the credit going away, and then the increase in valuations just being what it is. So again, I'm on my way out, but I think it's gonna be really incumbent on you all to communicate with constituents what that reality might look like.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I can just respond to what Commissioner Lachando just said regarding the the valuations. Yes, it's, there's gonna be, unless something is done in the legislature, who knows what's gonna happen, there could be a significant increase in the tax liability this next year, and people just need to be made aware of that. And Beth and I, we can talk about that, and we can work with Elizabeth too, but if people just think this is a a permanent reduction, at least, the way things are today, it is not a permanent reduction. That will be made up next year plus more.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it.
Well, Madam Chairman, I do have one more thing.
Sure.
We, you and I had talked about at Star, some problems out there. We are looking into some free software for scheduling, and so that's what we're looking at, the best alternative out there at Star would be scheduled appointments.
Oh, excellent, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Okay, let's go ahead then, and we'll move on to tax cancellations. Commissioner Malloy, you wanna make the motion?
Yes, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, Treasurer's Office. Good morning, Beth, how are you?
I'm doing well, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As Commissioner Lachando noted, tax bills have been received, and we know that quite well. Our call volume and mail has just exploded, just overnight. It's exponential work, our office. And it was noted, it is a one-time reduction. For the most part, taxpayers are acknowledging that, they recognize that, they've seen it on the insert, they've seen it on the bill. We will take steps next year to help at least educate on that it was one-time and not permanent, and see what happens with the legislature. In this week of Thanksgiving, there's just a lot that I'm grateful for. One is my staff has just been fantastic. Again, it's high emotion, high intensity, high work volume, but they're doing a fantastic job serving our customers. I am grateful for you as a board. Your departments have helped me to offer some assistance to our office and tax collections, and there's tremendous value in this. Thank you. It's collaborative, it helps us better understand each other's offices, but there's a cost benefit also. It's an efficient way for us to process payments, and it also helps us avoid paying overtime. So thank you to your departments.
Oh, thank you.
And finally, I want to say, yeah, thank you. I'm also so grateful for our taxpayers. They've been adaptable and are utilizing our Dropbox. Again, we offer multiple payment options, but by the high utilization that we're already seeing, that's helping reduce the foot traffic into our facilities, and then that frees us up so we can help those taxpayers who really do need to see us, for example, a cash taxpayer in person. So thank you all for your support.
Oh, thank you, Beth, and thank your staff for us as well. We really appreciate your staff and you and the fine work that you do. I'm just curious, when you said, you know, the kind of the phones are exploding right now, what are, what are people calling about? What's the the main concern or question?
Yes, great question. None are we open? There's been a few questions regarding the governor's one-time reduction, and the question, and the cities did not take the 3% increase. There's a few cases when the tax bill still went up. So the question is, how could there be an increase if the cities in Ada County kept their budgets flat? The response is, is that it's a consolidated tax bill. So it's on behalf of approximately 40 districts, including schools, ACHD, cemetery, mosquito. So just helping clarify that, that it's consolidated. Another question we've had is regarding refis of the environment. They've got a lot of refis in October and early November, and just due to timing, those escrow companies weren't able to notify us on time of who is now responsible for it. So in those situations, it requires taxpayers to work with the agent who closed their new loan, work with their new lender, to make sure the right party has the bill.
Well, it certainly does get complicated, you know, and I know folks have a difficult time looking at that bill and trying to figure it all out. Yeah, and it's not that easy. You hear, you know, keeping the budget flat, and then the credit, and it's really complicated and, as you know, challenging to try to communicate that effectively, since everyone has a little bit different story on their tax bill. But thank you, Beth, so much. Again, we really appreciate you. Commissioner Lachando, anything you'd like to say?
No, just, you know, appreciate you so much, Beth, and I think the the real thanks goes to Steve Rutherford for the work that he's done to just encourage our departments to be working collaboratively, and that we all do better when we work together. So if he's listening, good job, Steve.
I'll make sure.
Madam Chair.
Uh huh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Beth, I had a question, 'cause it came up from a, it's a, a, someone wanting to pay their bill, they actually were almost gonna give it to me and have me bring it in. How often are those drop boxes emptied?
Whoops, we lost you, Beth.
Okay. So any, any, anything dropped off on Friday, late Friday, or over the weekend would be collected Monday then, right?
Yeah, so Patrick?
Aren't seeing an increase in-
Have her turn to video off.
Weekend to to retrieve it.
Okay.
They heard it, yeah, I think so. Everyone heard that but us.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Beth, appreciate that. All right, let's go ahead then.
Yes.
Anything else in the Treasurer's Office?
Thank you.
Okay, Emergency Management. Oh, you bet, thank you. All right, Emergency Management, we have a FEMA Sheltering Delegation of Authority letter. I believe we need a motion on this.
Is this just to authorize signature?
I think so. Let's go ahead and make a motion. I don't know if we actually need one, but just in case, if you wanna make one, Patrick.
Sounds like Commissioner Lachando may have had a comment.
Oh, no, I'm just wondering if either, it looks like we have Joe or Sue have anything they wanted to say about this.
Yes, Sue, are you still with us?
And, Madam Chair, I'm on as well with Sue. Good morning. So yeah, this one doesn't really obligate us to do anything, just kind of gets us on the board. If down the road, we seek to pursue FEMA reimbursement for non-congregate sheltering as a mitigation strategy for COVID-19, the letter does comport with several kind of FEMA-regulated sideboards, right? We're only doing things that are rational, justifiable, we have the support of our Health District, and we have a cost-benefit analysis, meaning that if we were to basically sub this to hotels as a strategy for non-congregate sheltering and try to secure hotel space, it's far more cost-effective than us doing a cold start on building some sort of non-congregate residential option, you know, something with significant distancing, porta-potties, janitorial staff, and so forth. So doesn't obligate us to do anything, just kind of gets us on the board with FEMA and their, you know, their authorized representative, Office of Emergency Management at the state, if we want to seek reimbursement for isolating vulnerable populations or responders or other critical workers as a means of mitigating disease spread.
So Joe, I think Bob will be pleased to hear this gets Expo off the hook, right? Yes, you acknowledge it's not the best.
Ostensibly, it does. I mean, I never say never, but yeah.
And, and Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm, go ahead, Patrick.
I I read, I read through this, and I'm just curious, I I guess I was, it was a little hard for me to discern, so who are we delegating? I assume we're delegating the authority to bill FEMA or or try to reimburse through FEMA for these expenses. So who are we delegating that authority to?
Good question.
So Commissioner, I mean, that's a good question. Looking at the, you know, following the guidance that was given to us by FEMA, and it actually came out in a fact sheet, so it was a little bit hard to actually discern and follow the thread on, but essentially, we are making the appeal to the state to met, to assist us, right, as, you know, the state coordinating officer. If we do wanna seek FEMA funds down the road, you know, we're not necessarily delegating our authority to do anything, but it's just the ability for us to have this as an option, to have the Health District in support of it, and then if we choose to pursue FEMA reimbursement, whatever the reimbursement rate that's given us, whether the FEMA covers 75% and the state does the additional 25 or 15 of that 25%, it just enables us to make the ask down the road if we wanna seek reimbursement, with no guarantee that we'll get it or that it comes in a timely fashion. It's just, again, getting us on the board, and and we don't necessarily delegate any of our authorities to do anything, it just gives us the ability to set up non-congregate sheltering.
I guess that, that causes me to scratch my head, because the whole thing is a delegation of authority letter, the way it's written and and subject and and everything, so I didn't know, that's why I was asking, who it is we're delegating our authority to seek reimbursement through FEMA to?
Yeah, understood. You know, we we just pulled the language from the guidance that we were given to make sure we were checking the boxes on it, and probably someone far smarter than me would have a better idea if there is any kind of legal authority delegation implications in this. I I just look at this as us being authorized to ask to get reimbursed if we have to shelter certain segments of the population.
So Patrick, do you want this to be sent to legal for their review?
I I think it's a good idea that we would, you know, get, 'cause again, I tried to, I tried to fully understand the letter. It, it is rather complex and and a hard thread to follow on what's being done. I have no problem with the county being able to seek reimbursement through FEMA if we should establish this kind of scenario, but I, but I feel like otherwise, yes, we would be delegating our authority to somebody else, be it the state or some other agency, to seek that reimbursement.
And it's just not clear. Okay, fair enough. Let's go ahead then and send that over. We don't, we won't make a motion or anything on it today then, we'll send that for legal. All right? Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Thank you, Sue. All righty, next up, we have grants. I'll need a motion on Grant Number 2013-A. This is an Environmental Research and Education Foundation grant, and before we take a motion-
Yep, understood. You know, we, we just pulled the language from the guidance that we were given to make sure we were checking the boxes on it, and probably someone far smarter than me would have a better idea if there is any kind of legal authority delegation implications in this. I just look at this as us being authorized to ask to get reimbursed if we have to shelter certain segments of the population.
So, Patrick, do you want this to be sent to legal for their review?
I, I think it's a good idea that we would, you know, get, I, because again, I tried to, I tried to fully understand the letter. It, it is rather complex and, and a hard thread to follow on what's being done. I have no problem with the county being able to seek reimbursement through FEMA if we should establish this kind of scenario, but I, but I feel like otherwise, yes, we would be delegating our authority to somebody else, be it the state or some other agency, to seek that reimbursement.
And it's just not clear. Okay, fair enough. Let's go ahead then and send that over. We don't, we won't make a motion or anything on it today then, we'll send that for legal. All right? Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Thank you, Sue. All righty, next up, we have grants. I'll need a motion on grant number two zero one three dash A. This is an environmental research and education foundation grant. And before we take a motion, I think we have Teresa Rademaker on with us. Teresa, you want to speak to the grant and the scope?
Morning, Madam Chair. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This is simply a grant to establish some research regarding the efficacy of having a diversion area at the landfill to reduce some of the waste that we're seeing, and this is in direct correlation to the waste room analysis that we just did. There was a lot of waste that was coming through that we may, we may have an opportunity to divert, but with the growing population and the additional building that we're seeing in the valley, it's just going to be able to offer an opportunity for us to build studies of efficacy of this diversion and possibly have implications throughout other landfills to see how effective it acts.
Great. Really appreciate you and your team looking out for grants like this, you know, anything that really helps us, you know, get to where we need to be up there, better reuse programs and improve efficiencies, so thank you for that. Commissioner Lacheyondo, you are the designated trash lady liaison. Anything you'd like to add?
I echo that. Thank you, Teresa, for looking out for this, and I had an opportunity to look at that waste stream analysis report, and it is, you know, just a lot of, it is concerning how much is being put in the landfill, it doesn't need to be there, but the, the flip side is that there's a lot of opportunity for diversion. So, yeah, go get them, and thank you for looking out for this.
With that, do you want to make a motion?
Sure thing.
Okay.
We have to approve grant number two zero one three dash A and authorize the completion and online submission of the grant, and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, weed and pest, and I'll need Commissioner Malloy, a motion on liens.
Now, having toured that facility, I'm very comfortable making this motion. I move to approve the notice of lien and release of lien of weed, pest, of weed and pest as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. All right, next up, Expo Idaho. We have trailer storage UPS. Director Batista.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is a contract that UPS is looking for some place to store their trailers. The influx of packages and stuff to this area is becoming quite substantial, and so they don't have enough storage place for their trailers. So they've come to us, and we're going to designate a dirt lot that sits east on the back of the Hawks Lot, where they can have pretty easy access in and out of there. This is for a, excuse me, three-month period during the holidays, and after that, they'll, they'll probably hold their trailers back. Like I said last month, we are clawing and scratching for every dime we can find, and this is just another little piece of business that we have until we can finally figure out where we're going to be. So I'd appreciate it if you could approve this.
Okay, and then how, has the attendance for the light show?
According to them, it's been better than expected.
Well, good.
They've had a little glitch here and there, but when you put a million lights together, there's going to be some problems with that, but I think overall, the response we're getting is, thank God there's something to do, thank God we can be in our cars, thank God that, you know, we have something that we can at least go through and try and enjoy. So I think the overall picture of that and the overall response is that people are very excited about it.
Right, what's the price of admission?
It's thirty dollars, and some of that money goes to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. You know, so if we got a car of four or five, that's five bucks a head, kind of the way it works out. But I think they give five dollars to the Make-A-Wish Foundation.
Great, thank you.
And last week, and this today is the last day, we give away the Thanksgiving baskets that we, we do, and the week before that, we gave away the baskets to the homeless kids in, in the, in the school district. So, trying to do our part, get back to the community, because they give back to us when we need them, so.
Great, thank you, Bob. Any questions for Bob or comments?
Yes, Madam.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Malloy.
I just wanted to make sure, when we have an agreement like this, that, I think you said it was UPS is going to be utilizing part of this, leaving vehicles and, and items there, there is a clear release of liability on, on our part. I'm assuming all these agreements, correct?
Yes, yes, Commissioner, and we also make them carry general liability insurance as well.
Excellent, thank you.
And proof, we require proof thereof. Commissioner Lacheyondo.
Oh, I just wanted to say thanks, Bob. I, I think you know I'm on the Board of United Way and have done that Holiday Help Our Event for a number of years. We had some of our staff out to help package things for homeless students, and it wouldn't have been able to happen safely without you guys coming in to provide that space. So, thank you so much for that and, and everything else.
Thank you, Commissioners. We really appreciate your support and being behind us, even in these hard times. To just say thanks again to give back to the community, this is a chance that we don't very often get to do in the true sense of giving stuff away, but this time it landed itself and was warranted, so.
Yeah, great. All right, thank you. Thanks, Bob, appreciate it.
You betcha.
Okay, next up, parks and, oh, we need a motion for the interim event. Commissioner Malloy?
Sure, I move to approve the interim event agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, parks and waterways. An extra aye in there.
The whole peanut gallery around here this morning.
All right, so it looks like we just have one event coming up in April. Again, we have the caveat in the contract, the addendum COVID piece. So with that, Commissioner Malloy, you want to go ahead and make the motion?
Sure, I move to approve the Barber Park Education and Events Center Agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. All right, next up, we have fifteen agreements. Are there any questions on any of the agreements?
I just wanted to make sure we established that there's no big snafu in that the, the way one of them was listed was for 2020 Expo Idaho Fair as opposed to 2021. I understand the document is correct, it's just the, the way it was listed is.
Yes, that was corrected. That's agreement four two seven two two dash two zero. Yeah, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Okay, with that, you want to go ahead and make the motion?
Sure, Madam Chair, I move to approve the agreements as listed on the, what is it? Fifteen agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
A motion, a second, and a lot of feedback. All those in favor state aye.
Aye. Aye. Here, come show us your face if you're going to be voting.
Aye. All right, looks like the ayes have it. Next time, you have to sound like a pirate, though. Aye, 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 matey. All right, with that, we'll go ahead, then we'll go into recess, and then we'll get right back on the record, and we will go into our Emergency Medical Services District meeting.
You're on the record.
All right, good morning, everyone. Today's Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, 2020, and the time is nine thirty-five AM, and the Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session to meet with Director Sean Rain, Emergency Medical Services District. I didn't say that very, never mind. All three Commissioners are present, as well as Director Rain. Good morning, everyone. And the students, this is agenda, Madam Clerk.
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll go ahead then, and we'll take a page journal. First of all, Commissioner Lacheyondo?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment claims as listed on the claim schedule dated November twenty, 2020 regarding EMS expenditures.
Sounds like you're underwater. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. All right, that's all we have on the agenda, so general discussion. All right, Sean, how's it going?
Madam Chair, I'm doing well, thank you. We are down to ten people out on quarantine or isolation right now, which is good, because two weeks ago, we had twenty of our folks that were out on quarantine or isolation, so that's a good sign. I understand that the Board would like to talk about the crisis standards of care, if you guys are interested in that discussion.
Commissioners, yes?
So I had, I sent the publicly available document, that's Idaho's plan for crisis standards of care, and there's a section in there actually about both dispatch and EMS. And I don't, I don't think we have time this morning to really do it in justice. Obviously, we hope we can get to that, but I think we should sort of be eyes wide open and, and spend some time to understand what that looks like.
Commissioner Lacheyondo, a lot of feedback from your mic. It sounds like you're underwater. I don't know what's going on. Sean, could you hear her?
Madam Chair, I did, yeah, and we've certainly been developing the plans. We've taken our original plan that we developed back in March for care navigation and have adopted that with the help of our medical directors, and so in conjunction with what the state plan has in place, and really working with the hospitals, you know, one of my concerns is that the hospitals could, you know, one or more of them could suddenly go on to divert, which, you know, that becomes the situation right now. If you look at the, the state's plan, everything that we're doing right now still falls under the conventional category. Am I getting a lot of feedback, too?
Yeah.
No, you're, you're, you're clear. You're just choppy sometimes, but you're generally clear to me.
Okay. So, that plan is, is nearing completion. The only work that we have left to do on it really is if we get to a true crisis situation where there's literally no way to take a patient, and just working with the medical directors on what that would look like. You know, we're in Ada County, not nearing that currently, so we, we've got some time, but we should have that done in the next week or so with the docs.
Well, I think, you know, with the holidays between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and all you have to do is look at the news and people are not staying home, I think we're going to, January is going to be a hellish month, I'm afraid, January and February. So we better brace ourselves and prepare as much as possible. Stay home, people.
Madam Chair, I agree. Yep, stay home.
So, I don't know if you can hear me. Is that better?
Yeah, no, it's, you're still really girthed, yeah. Call, call Sean.
I can, I can hear you, I can hear you understand you. It's like, there's a second Borg voice speaking along with you.
Oh, my goodness, Patrick, you're, you have a big echo on your end. This is, we don't have good.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, really bad. All right, if anyone wants to call Sean, you've got a phone. This is a little difficult this morning. Well, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, Sean. Please tell your staff that the Board really appreciates everything they do, we're very grateful for you and, and your staff, and, and just hopefully, everybody can have some holiday cheer and a little bit of relaxation, let's hope, and stay safe.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, will do.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and go into recess, and we'll get back on at ten for legal.
In legal.